Good evening. We have a forum. We'll call the planning board meeting to order. First up for general information is Kevin Michelson.
Hi.
Hi.
I wanted to make my application to convert my pool house into an apartment under the accessory bylaw.
Okay.
And what I did was this package has all the appropriate documents as well as the check and as well as the mailers.
Okay.
And then these are just copies of all of these documents for the rest of the board members.
Okay, this is two sets of envelopes?
My wife did it. I don't know.
Okay, she needs one of the two sets. I just want to make sure. It looks like bad enough that it probably is. Yep, yep, there's two of each.
Okay, great. Yeah, she got her instructions from the staff.
Okay, that's good. You need to take.
The envelopes out of the stamps?
No, we put the stamps on them.
No, okay.
It's different, but it works. Okay, that'll be, that'll be all right.
Yeah, this is just all the package.
You'll take this and this and file it with the town clerk.
Oh, okay.
And one set of those.
One set of, one set of plans.
Okay, no problem. I made a bunch, so I'm good. Let the wife do that tomorrow.
So, we're gonna have to bump it to the 17th because we have a primary election on the 3rd.
Right, okay. You're talking of March, right?
Of March.
Okay.
Right off of Bay Road, it's a circle. Used to be a farm.
Across from Jack and Zizka's?
Yeah, right across from Jack and Zizka's, yeah. But I have a, too big a house for two of us. We'd like to convert it, so. Actually, three of us.
This is room 203, right?
207 or 203?
No, this is 200.
This is room 203?
203, right? Yes.
Yes, that's what it says on the agenda.
Okay, so take that.
Can I just bring this down to the clerk and?
And one set of plans and, right, and you're all set.
Okay, great. Do you want?
Yeah, those.
Yeah, these are all one for each guy.
Okay.
Just so you don't have to hand stuff along.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, guys. Have a great evening.
What's the address here? 18 Grand Oak.
Yeah, or the mailing address is P.O. Box 290 if you need to mail.
No, we'll just, oh, no, this is for, notice in the newspapers, we would put where it is.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great day.
Okay, see you in a month and a bit. All right, we've got a few minutes. We've got a couple of bills to pay.
I love the beard.
Oh, following your lead. So is he.
Yeah, mine's falling out, so.
Okay, we got two legal notices to pay. One is for the recent heirloom collection of 17542. The first publication was yesterday. The public hearing is in two weeks from tonight. Motion to pay that.
How much was it?
17542.
Move, we pay it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then somehow, I know we submitted it, but evidently it might have got lost in whatever misplaced, we got a legal notice for the zoning articles that we passed at the, uh, Fall Special Town Meeting, still in this year's budget of 366 and 80 cents.
Motion to pay. So good.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Ken might have something for us and briefly, we're all talking, we can talk, we can talk about budgets afterwards. Mr. Reedy?
Yes?
Do you have something?
Yeah, sure.
Or you want to be part of a bigger discussion?
Whatever pleases the board. It doesn't matter.
He's probably on the clock. Let's talk to him.
Uh, I need to eat, too, you know. All right, let me get you live. So I, um, for a little bit of context, this was, I was here a couple of weeks ago, industrial use in the industrial zoning district. Specifically, we were talking about the climate-controlled storage facility that idea movers and storage is gonna look to propose, uh, South Maple Street. And so, um, kind of taking, uh, Mr. Maximowski's lead about industrial use in industrial zoning district, I tried to craft a zoning amendment that at least we can talk about. So what I've done is I've taken the section 5.4, the parking requirements. I've looked to amend 5.4.1 just to allow the 5.4.3 to supersede the 2 to 1 ratio. And then that 5.4.3, I tried to track the industrial manufacturing use category because that's what it is under your table of uses in the zoning bylaw. And then I did some research. In the balance that I was trying to strike was thinking about storage facilities, which are kind of a unique creature, and how they're treated, and industrial manufacturing in total. And so I came up with a couple of different ways, and then ultimately gave this board an out to increase it, lower it, or waive it, do whatever you want to do. And so the way I've essentially tracked the language of 5.4.1, um, but I've also included, and this is a piece for conversation, instead of off-street parking area, I've put off-street parking spaces. I thought it might be important to have some definition to that, and I don't know what the board is thinking about for the future, but I know how you define off-street parking area versus off-street, not having an off-street parking spaces definition. So whether you use it now or later, I thought it was important to define. And then what I've done is said, okay, there's typically an office space used with these, any industrial manufacturing use, and then there's like some big open floor area, and then there's employees. So I tried to encapsulate all of those different categories. So I just use one space per 300 square feet of office space floor area, one space per 10,000 square feet of other floor area, which I defined below, and then one space for every employee on shift. And, you know, with that, I toyed with including some waveability if it's on a public transit route, or if there's some ride sharing or some way to not have to provide that one-to-one. But I didn't think it was appropriate for that section. So then I went on to say, provided however, that this requirement may be lowered, increased, or waived by a majority vote of the planning board, so obviously something for you to consider.
So how many spaces would Mr. Banus's facility require then?
This, yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to do the math. I think they're looking to propose, um, 25 spaces. And so, uh, one space for 300 square feet of office floor area, I think they're looking at about a 1,600 square foot office floor area. Uh, so let's say five spaces there, and then another, I think it's 80-something thousand square feet, so another eight spaces, so you're up to 13, and then two to three employees, so you're probably up to 16, 17 spaces for use like that. And so again, I tried to balance that with just industrial manufacturing uses generally. So I wanted to give you guys the opportunity to, upon a finding that the parking will be adequate for the proposed use, and as approved, will not constitute a substantial inconvenience or hazard to a butters, vehicles, or pedestrians, you could modify it up or down, um, depending upon, because there are some like medical marijuana, marijuana is a use in the industrial or manufacturing use category. So just thinking about that, and like, well, what does that look like? Yes, if it's a cultivation facility, that's one thing. If it's a dispensary, that's something else. So it does fall into this, but I wanted to give you the ability to increase it if you wanted to in those certain circumstances. And then I define off-street parking spaces, nine by 18, um, in dimension, it's sufficient for vehicles which are currently licensed, registered for over-the-road use. Other floor area, I tried to define somewhat broadly, so that's the one per 10,000, one space for 10,000, storage, manufacturing, processing, warehousing, garaging, or similarly-used floor area. Uh, and then the outdoor storage of vehicles at a warehouse or storage facility shall not count towards the floor area. So I know that there are times with like car dealerships that you count that towards the floor area. So this was my first crack at it, and I'm obviously open to discussion or not.
Would this be grandfathered to future owners and uses?
Well, this is, that's a critical point.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine.
That's the problem.
If it's industrial use for industrial manufacturing use in the industrial zoning district.
Correct.
So, so yes, that would be, would be grandfathered for, for future industrial manufacturing use.
But if somebody came in and decided they wanted to use that building for retail, but this.
They're gonna cry and whine to us. We're gonna be in a tough position.
No, we aren't. No, we aren't.
No, no.
Okay.
Won't apply. They're gonna cry. You're right, Joe. However, it'll clearly not apply to them.
Yeah.
But let's say Mr. Banus's business is slowing down and all of a sudden Amazon, like they have that problem in Hoyoke, where they have these little vans running around by the, it seems by the thousands now, but nevertheless. So he wants to supplement his business for the Amazon vans to come in. We said, you can't do it. He said, well, jeez, I really need to.
You can't.
Okay, it's, that's what we have to be aware of.
You simply gotta go by the law.
Is it gonna be recorded in the deed, or is it just gonna be like any other zoning?
It's gonna be the bylaw.
It's gonna be a bylaw.
Yeah.
We record some stuff in the deed.
Well, assuming, just going through the process, if the bylaw is changed and then a special permit is issued for this site, we do record that decision. And so I think, you know, if it's a future board, if that did happen, you know, it would be an issue.
One space for 10,000, I think that's a little bit too generous.
Okay.
I'm thinking, you know, I wasn't sure, like, the reason I said, I think, would I say 1,500, whatever it might be, um, and that might be a little bit too much. Or this might be too many spaces, but maybe, we gotta, I think it should be something less than 10,000, maybe, maybe 5,000. I was trying to say 10,000.
I believe that, um, I, and I was trying to look through my files. I thought I had a printout, but I gave the board maybe the last, in October, um, bylaws, a suggested bylaw, um, modeled for this, the question of spaces per certain amount of square footage, depending on the type of use.
Right.
So I don't have that with me. I probably did, if you do. But I would, I would probably say that with these manufacturing, you're, I think if you were to imagine, and this is probably specific to self-storage and understanding the nature of self-storage businesses, like if you took a U-Haul, does, does Hadley have a U-Haul?
Yes, several.
Okay. Um, but it, you would have a couple of parking spaces, maybe one or two for the employees, and then however you have your loading zone for however it's designed, I'm not really sure. It's not typical that you would provide lots of parking for those types of uses. And I would say for manufacturing uses in general, you're providing parking for the workers, not necessarily visitors. And then, you know, a site plan approval would allow you to, um, review the flow of traffic where you would park any sort of delivery vehicles, depending on the nature of a manufacturing business. It, it's typical that out of all the manufacturing uses, this type of use is probably the one that wouldn't require as much. I, I wish I had the.
Yeah, we can look at it.
What's our deadline, Jim?
We need to have to, the town administrator tomorrow, the number of articles and basically what they're going to be. But he doesn't need the wording for at least a month.
Okay, so we've got to get out of here. We're gonna take this home and you, if you could, send us the emails.
Email, email, email a copy to the planning and MA.
Thank you.
And then we can massage it.
So Ken, do you want to email me the parking one again if you?
I will.
You may have emailed it, but if I send it again, I will just shoot it out to everybody.
So our current blanket is two for one, right?
Yes.
Yes, two square feet of parking per square foot of building.
Right.
This, this, this specifically mentions parking spaces was different.
Right, right.
Right.
So just something.
Are we gonna define parking spaces?
He does. He's gotta define.
It's just that five guys that there are tight.
He's gotta define it here.
Yeah.
Just define it here.
We are, but we don't.
Not, so you don't typically, which is, so when I go to the municipalities, you're typically nine by eighteen.
Narrow and narrower now.
That's it. If you want compact, quote-unquote, compact spaces, like Amber says, eight by 16 is what they consider compact spaces. They have a provision in their bylaw that says you can't have more than 50% of the spaces as compact spaces unless you get approval. Most municipalities are nine by 18. Some do 10 by 20, but I don't see many 10 by 20.
Well, Stop and Shop is 10 by 20.
But just as far as.
Well, they've got the double lanes, I mean, the double.
Which I think is great. Um, but, and so to your point, what I tried to do was to think about who's gonna be using these parking spaces, and so while that 1 to 10,000 seems pretty expansive, we're also taking care of any employees that are on the site, and there's a one-to-one parking ratio.
That's, that's true, too.
There. So just something, because of machines and equipment, you know, don't need parking spaces.
You haven't seen new machines.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. AI is covered.
Well, and also, too, they're selling boxes and packing stuff there, so that's a little bit more.
Well, you, and you have the ability. I mean, so part of this is, you know, when we come back to the presentation, you're gonna see what the self-storage facility or the climate-controlled storage facility, you're gonna see like the circulation around it, you're gonna be like, okay, well, people are gonna pull up, they're gonna pull here, they're gonna go into their storage unit, and they're gonna come out. It's not a technical parking space, but it's just operationally how it happens. And if you say, well, we don't think you have enough, you put more. Or if you say, we think you have too much, you put less.
There are statistics as to how often people go visit their storage facilities?
I will try to get some for you. Yeah, I know, so when I talked to Brent, he said that, I asked about 24-hour, and I asked about live and resident, because these are some of the things you're seeing. He said, no live and resident here. As far as 24 hours, their process is, I think he said he has 500 and some odd units over here in Hadley. Of those, only five have been granted 24-hour access. So they have to put an application in, they have a conversation about it, and so, you know, I think most of it occurred during business hours, but I don't know.
Those are the drug dealers?
Yes. Turn off the lights before. Yeah.
So what we would probably want to see as part of the application is also addressing, is he going to keep his moving trucks at the other location or put them here? So that will affect, uh.
Whether or not they count for parking?
Right. Yeah, I think you want to know, we need to know a little bit of the business plan, because if he is going to move his vans to this site, then we'd obviously need more parking.
Right, wouldn't count those as parking spaces.
Yeah.
Okay, which.
They would be in addition to the county.
They'd be additional parking, yeah.
And of course, obviously bigger.
Right.
Okay, yeah, that's a good, good, good start on this, Tom. Thank you.
Sure. One, one thought, you know, coming up on one year, so you guys have a few more years than the experience on this. I like the idea that we have, you know, that control to be able to go up or down, but does that also open us up to being sued for being capricious or arbitrary if we're not?
You just gotta have, you're just gonna have good solid leads for making your decisions.
Because we're using it more as a guideline instead of a hard.
Right.
Right. And that's why I tried to put a couple of standards in there, you know, that substantial detriment or.
Yeah, and I'm not sure we want to give the planning board this much authority to completely waive everything for the simple reason, okay, you've got five members today, 99% of the time, we agree on stuff. But in the future, the membership changes, we're gonna be careful not to give the board too much authority to waive things. That's something, you know, it's, it's, we gotta plan.
Do you say 99% of the time we agree on stuff?
Yeah. I mean, how many, how many split issues and decisions have we had?
Well, how many significant split decisions we have is the question.
Very few.
I can think of a couple.
I can think of, yeah, that's right, a couple. But of all the ones that we've had, vast majority were in agreement.
I agree.
You know, maybe not 99, but it's not, but it's not 50 by any stretch either.
I get the drift.
You know, so anyways, okay, thank you, Tom.
Yeah, no, thanks a lot, and I'll see you in a couple of weeks anyways.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Just to Ken, you are, we're ready. I'm gonna get you your own name tag yet.
So I wouldn't be sure where we left off. So maybe let's discuss the, what's happening with billing at the moment.
Okay, that's a guess.
Was on the phone call with the town administrator, and I later spoke to the PVPC accountant. It's nothing that the planning board has to do. I believe what needs to happen, because the current contract that PVPC has is with the planning board. So in order to, as I've done for, for, for the board, is to create the accounting of hours for the MS4 project. And sent that off to you, and the town administrator has paid that. But it needs to be, basically, we have to recode the hours that have already been spent, because our hours are coded, mine and Patty's hours are coded to the planning board assistance program. We need to recode those hours to an MS4 project, which means it just requires some additional documentation. And I'm working, and I will be emailing the town administrator, possibly in doing some sort of after-the-fact service agreement. Basically, the work is 90% done based on, you know, the email that the board received from Patty regarding some of the last findings from DEP and the EPA. So what I hope to do is, because I need to charge my hours that, like, tonight, um, hope to do is, by the end of the week, have something to the town administrator that hopefully he can turn around without much fanfare. And.
Even if you could just code it, like adding a, a capital A after it to indicate it's on a separate track.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and I think what the thing, yeah, um, and I'm not, I don't question, I don't like to question the accountant, you know, there's whatever sound accounting practices. Usually, when things are coded, there is some sort of service agreement. So understanding that the planning board has this pot of money, um, and we are trying not to have the MS4 work be taken from that pot of money, we need to create a place where the MS4 work needs to go and be coded to.
Would it be easier to code it to us? So our concern is that our budget line item for PVPC, we have a budget line item for PVPC, um, which has an account number and everything on our end.
Yeah.
I didn't realize when we were getting into all of this, I didn't recall that we had a separate town meeting warrant article for MS4 compliance. So all of that's gonna come out of a separate pot.
Right.
Which we actually don't control.
Right.
But I suppose if we had a side agreement, not an amendment to our agreement, but a, a side letter to our agreement, since we sort of took the initiative in pushing MS4 on the regulatory side, uh, it just would have to be, you'd have to get some different code on your end, because on our end, it comes out of a different account. So.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not very familiar with these service agreements, and we usually go through some sort of review, but I think, um, you know, that's.
You could almost copy the service agreement we have.
Right.
And just put a single task on it.
Yeah.
And.
And that's, that's where I was going with, um, basically sending the town administrator.
Yeah.
That with just that task, with amount of money to cover any remaining work, plus the $5,100. So it would just be a separate entity.
Yeah.
And we would then, on our end, recode all of our hours to that.
And you may already have a code for it, because we had a PVPC grant to study MS4, um, it was like a couple of years ago, and we had someone from PVPC.
Yeah.
Here, going through all of our records, and I think you built off of her work.
Yeah, Patty started to build off that work.
Uh, so what she had done was just left us with a menu of, this is what you have, this is what you don't have, this is what you need to do, and then we turned to you to put flesh on the skeleton. So you probably already can just use that code if you still have it.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it, because the, the work is funded through grants, if that grant is still available to code to, um.
I mean, I don't know if we want to, yeah.
We don't, we probably want to go back that far, but we have a town meeting warrant article of X amount.
Right.
And that's where, that's where we can, but there's, there's more than enough to pay, put us in there for this.
Yeah, no, and I, and I, and I get where you're going.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm trying to figure out the mechanism, because if it's policy that normally you would need to have an agreement with any invoice that goes out, we need to have that agreement.
Yeah, okay.
And so it's just kind of, you know, retroactively revisiting that.
With that being said, the last invoice we got from PVPC was from 9/30, and it was a 4752.04. And I'm assuming there's more through the end of the year.
So as I emailed, I believe, the bill and the chair, um, because the MS4 work was included in that, as well as my work on definitions and, you know, attendance at the meetings unrelated to MS4, that budget was spent. If you remove the $5,100, obviously, it's not spent.
Right.
So I did some accounting, I don't, it's not official.
Oh, okay.
But reporting, and I don't, because I don't have an invoice until we can figure out how to.
That's fine.
Deal with that. Um, there's about 60 hours more worth of work.
Okay. Question.
Yeah.
On the $7,500 that we allot for PVPC, about how many hours a year does that purchase? Well, very ballpark.
I think it's 90, and that depends on.
Obviously, who's working on it.
Who's working. Um, I believe it's about 90 hours, 35 hours.
Just for your information, we, we've been using PVPC now for a long time.
Oh, yeah.
At $7,500,000, I think you made the comment that it only makes sense, that the dollar value stays the same, but as the increases in inflation and the pays go up, the hours are being reduced. So next year, we are going to try and double the budget. So we'll go from 75 to 15. We'll see where that goes.
Okay.
Okay. We won't know until the meeting hits it. Okay. We talked to town administrator, and he's not against that. Also, they were, the town administrator's talking, the town administrator also talked to, who's the head of the PVPC now? Who's the executive director?
Uh, Kimmerly Robinson.
Ken?
Kim.
Kim Robinson. And talked about possibly getting, uh, they had, they have, at first, they wanted to hire a planner. They were looking to hire a full-time planner to do some stuff.
Yeah, I remember the town was talking about that.
And I had a good talk with the administrator last week about, what is this town planner going to be doing? And they gave me a list of some things, and I said, okay, you've got probably a year or two of items there, and it's not full-time. We don't have the workload for anything more than, I'm guessing, 15 hours a week. Some little more, some little less, but on average, about that. And I says, we're gonna hire somebody full-time, pay him some salary, and probably in two years, we're not gonna have a lot to do. We'd be better off to increase this budget, utilize PVPC a little more, and hire a consultant to do the work. Yeah, you're gonna pay. Yeah, you're gonna pay more for the consultant, but along with it's gonna be a whole lot less expensive than having a full-time person with benefits, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I agreed with that. So the bottom line was, they're probably not gonna be going for full-time planner, but now they're talking to PVPC, the, Kim, could they do these extra tasks? Didn't have an answer, they were gonna look into it. I says, you know, that was, that was my first suggestion, can PVPC help us with this stuff?
I mean, I, so I served as an interim conservation agent for the city of East Hampton early in my, during the la, during the summer. And I had office hours, so I would go to the city hall and spend three, four hours there. And, well, I, my schedule didn't allow for it because I was actually here, but to attend evening meetings, the conservation commission meetings. So it's possible that some sort of arrangement like that, depending on budget, can work. You know, where presumably, you, I can have some office hours and then attend meetings and do work either here or at PVPC. It's possible.
We, we used to have something like that, it was the seat of employee way back when, and it became a management nightmare, depending on the hours and what they were comfortable they're doing, and all of a sudden, they thought they were a town planner. And they're making decisions that really a board should make, and it became a little politically uncomfortable.
Yeah.
Whereas this, I think, from the point of view of the public, this arrangement is a good one, because if ultimately you don't like what we're saying or doing, we can be replaced. Unfortunately, I see in many of our neighboring towns, the city planner is, is a dictator, and the board just rubber stamps what they're, what they're suggesting. So I think this is a good suggestion, the way you're proposing it.
No, I mean, down the road, yeah, we'll probably need somebody, but at least if this arrangement from what we talked about could work out, it would be good for everybody because it's, it gets going at a few, at the reasonable hours as needed, gets most of the work done, and it's not painful to anybody, and kind of, as opposed to, here's a full-time person, you know, like I says, the workload main isn't there right now. Down the road, you work into it, okay, you find out, well, this person's working X hours a week. Well, you, next year, you know, really, it could be a little more than that. And then, okay, now it gets to the point, okay, now, there's, there's, there's a reasonable need, and you go, go as accordingly.
Also, you got a full-time person in government, and the inclination is to develop your empire.
Exactly right.
Let's hire a couple more people. Let's, let's come up with some ideas here.
Yeah, so, but anyway, you know, that, that's kind of what's been going on with, with, with the administrator, town administrator and Kim, looking for what can we do reasonable that'll satisfy our needs?
And I think, you know, at the end of the day, you know, it's the policy set by the board. You know, if there are certain rules regarding, and the planner can definitely just be there for administrative tasks of accepting applications, working with the building inspector, doing inspections for the board. But, you know, having been a municipal planner before, the tests did end up growing, you know, doing grants, grant writing, and I also serve as both a town planner and a conservation agent, so I had, you know, to, to work with the planning board, the ZB and the conservation commission. So, I mean, it is dependent on the board.
The building inspector, I think, on a hourly basis was well worth what he was paid. I think if we had you people doing inspections, it probably wouldn't be his dollar per hour equivalent, would it?
No, I mean, the building inspector is certified in certain, I'm just saying inspections like ensuring that.
Not, not, not building inspections per the plans, overall inspections, I think Tim was alluding to, like, do the plans, are the plans correct for submitted, is, is, you know, not, not a formal inspection.
So in the subdivision regulations, we have a couple of checklists that call for some inspections that, what we have done is, we have decided to rely on the self-certification by a professional engineer.
Right.
Employed by the builder to say that the work has been substantially done according to the plans.
Is that a potential conflict?
Because we are asking for it to be a professional engineer.
They got a PE stamp.
They're, they're putting their license on the line, so. Is, is it a potential, yeah, theoretically, it could be in a close case, but most of these aren't close cases. But having someone to go out and, you know, just check off, take a drive-through, I think all of us at some point have driven through a subdivision under construction, but, you know, we're not really getting out of the car and with a tape measure and seeing how high the curbs are and things like that.
Mike, in the town doesn't, the highway department wants to inspect the water, the hookups, et cetera, et cetera, so that is left to them. So it's not completely at somebody else's discretion.
Right, okay, so, good, you got that covered, next one.
Um, so I believe I were talking about definitions?
Yes.
So I did print out, I haven't, we, we, the last time I was here, I can't even remember. The last time we talked about this, this is, hasn't been changed, so if you still have one that's dated ten fifteen, that should be it.
Nice to nine thirteen, thank you.
So at that. We went through, the last time, and I was going over some notes, is we went through the list, and we condensed, and we moved certain definitions other, under other sections. There were some, some outstanding questions about repeated definitions, like structure, which is in your flood overlay section as well as building.
See it in.
Uh, last page, under the solar energy section, oh no, sorry, as a general definition. So I didn't know if you had any comment with regards to structure per the floodplain. Bylaw versus structure per a general definition for structure.
The building inspector was concerned that there would be some potential conflict between the definitions that we're making in the state building code. Those have been resolved.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, have they been resolved?
Have they been, with the building inspector?
Or have you checked it against the state building code?
The, the state building code, I think, would be limited to a couple of definitions, I have not.
Okay.
It would be very limited to some of the stuff here, I think, with regards to building and.
There, there isn't a problem if we're different than the state building code, as long as we define it. Okay, we can, we can be different, as long as we're not awfully grossly different. But we can be, you know, if we, if we are defining something differently, well, as far as I know, it is okay, as long as you are succinct in your definition.
I think the, it's the job of the building inspector at that point to split out what is building code, building inspection versus zoning by law, but zoning enforcement officer.
You've got your comments in here, couldn't you just cross, cross-reference and basically say in the floodplain structure, you know, say at, at the end for, for building-related structure, C, page something, and then under the flood, under the building structure, say for flood drainage system structures, C. I mean, there are two different uses of the same word.
There were a few definitions we were going to leave in various sections. And I was gonna take care of, once we got this set, I was gonna go through and say, okay, go, go section by section of zoning by law as part of adopting the definitions, we're gonna take this out of here, we're gonna take this out of here, we're gonna leave this. We probably should leave structure definition within floodplain, because it is unique to the floodplain, and structure, literally every place else, is defined on the last page.
So, yeah, I guess that, that is, that is something that could be useful if there are definitions that are specific to a certain bylaw. So structure can remain in the floodplain bylaw as, and you'll just have one definition there. But then move the rest of the floodplain stuff to your definition.
I think that was what we talked about at the last meeting, was that there were some we were going to leave in various areas because they were so unique. Whereas the other ones are generally, general, general more across the board. And I think we had taken a lot of those out, and we pretty much, in this one that you have, there may be a few stragglers here, like, you know, structure in, in the floodplain, but everything else kind of stays in there.
We've held this down pretty well, you're right, Jim, and so, I mean, if there's gonna be any controversial definitions, obviously, it can be singularly changed.
And, and this, this, this definition section is by no means not gonna change over the next few years. As we add stuff or take the file, we find, oh, that's not, that's, that's a problem, okay.
Certain, certain words are buzzwords, for example, under motel. Building designated primarily for transient or overnight occupancy.
I believe hotel and motel, we were gonna take those definitions out.
Okay, because the transient, there was a motel in town that is gonna be torn down that went from a motel to a transient apartment. They morphed into apartments, and they said, oh no, it's still a motel, but.
Yes, this reflects the, a change that we did discuss, because there was some language. Did you want to remove that altogether? I'm looking at my notes from the last.
Remove what was that again?
Hotel or motel or lodging house.
I don't believe we use hotel and motel in our zoning bylaw. That's why we're gonna take them out. Except maybe in.
Might be in the table of uses.
Table of uses.
So maybe we shouldn't be taking it out.
Yes, you're right, I was just thinking that myself, when I said that.
Culture, institutional. Commercial retail, hotel, motel, or restaurant.
Okay.
It's interesting that restaurant disappeared with those, it's very different. Yeah, 'cause you have defined under the bed and breakfast related terms, hotel, motel, and lodging houses there.
Although I think that was for the purpose of making a distinction between those and what a bed and breakfast was.
We could take out the words transient, you know, just leave for overnight occupancy.
Yeah, the transient word is, it's, it's a buzzword, maybe it's from the old days that.
It's simply primarily designed for overnight occupancy.
Yeah.
So there were also some, some items that I had come across as I was going through the bylaw, that there are some sections, especially the older part of the bylaw, where the entire section is a definition.
Lot.
Uh, or lot, uh, we also have like a width, so four point three point seven, width is defined, and then that's, that goes on to define width.
So I, I know that we had that conversation, and I think if you turn to lot-related terms, which is, unfortunately, I don't have pages on this. If you look at the pages, it's the fourth page on the backside.
Lot-related terms?
Yes. So I know that you suggested, and I added the language, also C section four point three.
Yeah.
We.
That's well-defined.
Yeah, probably.
We, we removed the width of a lot. And.
Because that is in four point three.
Right, that was a special zoning article at the time, that's. People became very creative, so that square was put in. They're so creative, you could put a house out of it.
So I didn't know if you, I have dots next to these. Yard, front yard, rear yard. I can't remember the, the comment regarding that, because it's still a distribution that you see.
Jim suggested, I think it was at the last meeting, said, yeah, keep putting lot-related terms, and then keep the other one, that's fine. And it's never a problem until a problem arises, then we'll see what it really means.
I think it's also helpful that you do tell them to refer to that section.
Yeah, key it back, I think that, that is useful.
And we, we've done that for a lot of, we think all of you.
If you could email, I don't know if we have this, just email it to Bill, he can distribute it to us. And I can get going on putting the, so, article together.
The second part of this, though, for the article, is going to be what we're gonna strike out of everything else.
Right, that's what I was gonna work on, once we got this all set, they're gonna go through the bylaw, section by section, and okay, we're gonna, you know, take this out, take this out, we'll leave this in, and it'll be a rather lengthy zoning article. But there's no easy way to do this without being correct.
You're right. Were you planning to address that article with a general term of removing definitions in section A, B, C, D, or were you gonna spell out?
I'm not quite sure how complex it will be, so, like, let's say we have section three, just as a number. We'll take all the definitions out of section three and putting it in here, then I will do that. But if we're taking out three of the five, then I'll go through and mention the ones we're removing and leaving.
Fortunately, I think we can all, we can do it just by, and strike section three point six point two, and strike section nine point four point one.
For, for the most part, I think where we're taking definitions out, we're taking them all out. Very few would be left.
Right.
If any, so there wouldn't, I mean, it'll be a wordy article, but I don't think it'll be that bad. The, the newer sections will pretty much be taking everything out or leaving it. It'll be the older sections, probably the first, probably five or six sections where we'll be leaving some, taking some out, but as we get to the, to the more newer, to the more recent articles, say whether it'll last, I hate to say it, twenty years, probably be taking out pretty much all or nothing.
All the definitions, but probably if we have a section that says definitions,
Right.
you would remove all of the text and add a reference to section one.
Right, yeah.
See section one point two.
Right. Yeah, that, that's.
Was there, other than sending? Was there, other than sending Bill the parking requirement?
What towns, West Springfield's got considerable amount of industrial area, so that would be a good one. Pardon?
They have a lot of pavement. And I think that a lot of towns, and I, I brought this up when we were talking briefly, and I think it was about this, this applicant, about the different uses and counting spaces rather than the square footage of parking that should be provided. But I believe there was some concern about certain applicants in the past that.
Well, it's, it's funny, the perspective of age. I mean, you, we see the problems. The warts are clear to us where there was not enough parking for a change of use. For example, an auto parts store to a restaurant. And how do you deny that person the opportunity to? So, that's probably our, my problem.
And we have experienced more than one of those.
Yeah.
So, it's something that we gotta be careful of where, I mean, we've had quite a few change of uses where the parking was adequate for everything. It's the older, I mean, really old, like fifty plus year old buildings or so, where there was a change of use, those who've only had a few of. But nevertheless, we wanna make, we don't wanna create a problem today and say, okay, you've got a, like, you know, Joe said, we've got this today, but then the use changes to a more dense use. We can't do that. Well, what do you mean? I'm zon business. That's why we have kind of one car in blind for parking and it's got, it's got its good points and bad points.
I, I mean, to, I think to address that, and I think the movement to looking possibly at parking spaces versus parking amount, is there would be a threshold based on the change of use. So, if you had a specific use of car store and had, you know, one space per two thousand square feet of a car facility or an auto parts store. And then you said for a restaurant, one space per seven seats in a restaurant. Through the site plan approval process, a threshold would require you to look at the parking and address parking that way. And what possibly could happen is the applicant saying, oh, well, then I'm gonna seek a variance from the ZBA to, because I'm not able to meet the parking requirement.
And that opens up a significant problem.
Yeah, yeah.
But it, it's, I, I spoke to Jim about the fact that Five Guys is opening up, LL Bean is opening up, One Tin Grill is opening up, there's gonna be a haircutting place opening up. And that whole area is kind of a strip mall that's been close, put closer to Route Nine.
Yeah.
The parking is already tense. They're anticipating Five Guys, the, I talked to the manager just on that opening day, and he said, all our employees are told to park over on the Walmart side so they can have room for the customers. And it does, they, they realize the problem.
I mean, I was, I was at Five Guys on Sunday, one o'clock.
Yeah.
Place was busy, and I've said. Luckily, LL Bean wasn't that busy.
Correct, yeah.
And, yeah, there was a ton of people in the restaurants, but there was actually, for the most part, enough parking. Like I says, LL Bean wasn't that busy. Be interesting during a busy shopping season. Of course, during, those are unique. During a busy shopping season, summertime, there's not enough parking, period. And that's just, you know, those are a once a year situation where to plan for those, you would be ridiculously blacktopped. So, you're gonna plan for the normal, and the malls used a lot of the parking in the main lot for this, if you wanna call it, to the front where they got the Five Guys and LL Bean and stuff. And, well, we need to do, you know, they, they using the whole, the mall has overall enough parking, but the problem is, it's not easily accessible. And you'd walk across some serious traffic.
People get used to covered.
Yeah. So, but, good news is, they're, they're all doing well.
That is good. Yeah, so I'll go ahead and, you know.
So, yeah, you're gonna send me the def, text of the definitions and also of the parking.
Very good. Yeah, and if, you know, the board wants to, to work through, if the board is looking at a bylaw amendment, I can assist with it if we are needing to address parking.
I think we wanna, we need to do, we might need to do something. We wanna be very careful because we also don't wanna get to the point where, oh, yeah, you can do this and, but you can't do this.
Which, which, based on this, suggested is specific, like, it is very specific.
Yes.
And do you want to be that specific for this type of use? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. That's what we're.
Yeah.
For, for pure industrial uses in the industrial zone, I'm leaning that that probably would be okay. There's no way you can use business uses in a business zone for something like that because they change so often.
Well, we changed the zoning when the mall, Mountain Farmers Mall was called the Dead Mall, so there were some industrial uses that came in there. Spinoffs from UMass primarily, they wanted smaller spaces, and so that's why that is so industrial.
Yeah, there was a.
That was our move for economic development.
Where, where there was one of, this, oh, one of the, it was a warehouse club. Not a class, not a B, but a, but a, or, or Sam's, it was kind of a local.
Wholesale depot.
Wholesale, okay. And they were using part of the mall as a warehouse distribution center.
For their other stores.
For their other stores. And, of course, they only lasted a couple of years altogether. They completely went out of business, closed, but they're gone. And that was, we had changed the zoning to industrial so they could allow to do that. Plus, the mall was hurting, so maybe they could do some other things in the mall besides just this because it was, it worked out pretty well. You know, low impact, good taxes, and putting it back on a tax rolls. And then that's when they started revitalizing and turning it back into the stores that we see today. We just kept it industrial because we says, you know, the difference between industrial zone and a business zone is you're never gonna see houses in that whole section ever again.
Right.
Or any kind of residential use.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, low income, lower income housing. I was thinking that, I'm not gonna propose this right now, but maybe we need a high-rise, low-income housing project that would fit down there. Buy six stories?
We have pretty much that now in that area. And I don't think, this is my opinion, I don't think that housing and business are compatible. Anytime you wanna get.
They are in New York City.
Well, no, I'm talking about the ability to scuttle a zoning, a zoning change or a new building coming in. Look at what happened to Lowe's. One person bought some land adjacent to it and held that whole project up for a year. And then you have to buy them off.
But for purposes of lower income housing, one of the problems, as you described, is land. And you can preserve land by allowing structures to grow higher, grow taller.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying this right now, but this is a possibility fifty, sixty years down the road.
With the state, yeah.
We're probably going to be, wanna be careful about allowing higher-rise structures, much higher than we have on the south side of Route Nine because it, of the view of the Hoyle range.
Yeah.
But there may be other spots that, you know, Winfield is, is a good spot for, for the larger structures, completely out of sight.
Yeah, it, it's funny, you know, the, the whole mall, the concept of a mall is changing, right? So, I know that there's some examples of malls turning into residential housing.
Yeah.
And so, in the future, it would be multi-mapped.
They're not, they're not building malls anymore.
Right.
But we've seen the whole iteration from strip mall to enclosed mall to back to a strip mall now.
And, and that, that is becoming the more common thing where they, where people, where owners are converting where they can, enclosed malls into some kind of a strip mall. There are, I mean, I don't wanna say there's none, but there's very few strip mall, no, enclosed malls being built in the US. Outside of the US, different story. But someplace like that have reasons for it. Climate is one.
I miss that strip mall that burnt down. I'll tell you how, that was a classic, haven't we?
Ken, when, when you were working, was it Sturbridge or Southbridge?
That was Southbridge.
Okay. Was there any spillover from the Worcester vibration, the economic development they're seeing in the Worcester area?
I think it's starting to. They're starting, there's, there was some movement as far as home buying and the price of homes is going up. And there was a lot of home buying being done and because you had a lot of people living in Southbridge commuting to Worcester. And there was some new economic development that was happening as I was leaving. I think the, the three large, medium-sized towns and cities, they're all towns, Sturbridge, Southbridge, and Charmelton. You know, they were, they were bedroom communities to Worcester. But Southbridge had the more urban, you know, center. It used to be the headquarters for American Optical, just large industrial use.
They had some big industrial places in there.
Yes. So, now they're being reused for other things, right? And I remember working on one specific project within that complex for affordable housing, turning a mill building into affordable housing. So, I mean, there's, the reuse of these older buildings is happening. And it's usually for, to address affordable housing and more dense, you know, apartments type development.
Next thing to do, we've got the, we are good, so we're gonna send email to Bill so we can get working on it. Other topics you mean that we're working on?
I want to, I know that, I think once we figure out the bill for the Emmett's floorwork, probably just want to reconnect with Patty and see, based on the last iteration she gave to the working group.
Right.
If there needed to be any.
I got the impression, because I think the, that settlement statement that I circulated was after the working group had met.
That's correct.
And it, her reply to me was that there would be changes required in the draft regulations to comply, but we have a year to do that. An additional year to do that.
I don't think there's, and speaking to her, I don't think there's much change.
Right, okay.
The town has a bylaw, you know, and any applicant would need to do that. I think having the regulations sooner rather than later is probably.
Yeah, yeah. If we wanna drag it out next year, we can get it done this summer.
Right.
Or by the fall, yeah. Because then it'll drag it out into not getting it done on time.
So, what, what Ken had put together for us about a, well, maybe even a year ago, or, no, you weren't here a year ago, but when, one of your relatively early tasks was assembling copies of our work programs going back a number of years. So, I have that. I will dig it out. I will circulate that around.
Okay.
Because I think there are some things that were worthwhile projects that just got bumped in favor of something that was more pressing.
One of the things was the rules and regulations.
Of the planning board, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I do have some iterations.
While you mention that, with the, it's February, and the new contract, can start looking at the new contract for next year. And tasks on it. I think last year was the first year possibly, you know, ever that we got it done before the end of the year, the fiscal year.
So, I think maybe we wanna look at the MS four regulations for the fall town meeting. Well, no, we don't need, we don't need that.
We don't need a public hearing.
Just need to do it. So, as soon as those are settled, we'll proceed. That's why I was thinking, if we do the planning board, rules and regulations as well.
Yeah, I think that would be.
We can have a single public hearing to adopt both sets of regulations.
I think that would be a good idea.
Was there anything in the subdivision regulations that needed to be tweaked to comply with MS four?
So, I think, just in a quick review of the subdivision regulations, subdivision regulations are pretty typical all around. The, the model that I presented on, that P D C W's on, does address lid and, so low-impact development and green infrastructure as well as maybe if you wanted sidewalks on both sides or the ability to waive certain aspects of subdivision development. I think it probably could use a look at to see if there are things in there that, just fixing some of the language to maybe have a stronger emphasis on stormwater.
So, that is, our subdivision regs are relatively recent. Larry worked on them with us, so.
I think if anything, more than likely, just looking at stormwater.
Yeah. Would, would be a good idea to look at them.
Okay, I think we could, we, we know there'll be enough in the, there'll be enough left over to cover that at least. So, if you could look at our subdivision regulations as they relate to full MS four compliance, because we were not, that was not on the horizon when we started working on it with Larry. In fact, I think we even started working on it with Jessica.
Because I think Larry used some of the Hadley's model as a base model for the six communities that we worked with, so.
Yeah, the critical area at the time was the last lot. It used to be the last lot had to be released once the road was put into sufficient regulations.
Right.
And then they'd walk away. So, now the last lot does not have to be released until it's accepted by the town meeting, so that's.
I mean, that, and in, in working with the working group and working with planning boards that are addressing subdivision regulations, that is the thing that they're changing about when they release that last lot. So, I know that our, you know, and it sounds as if Hadley's adopted that, so that's good. And I would say that.
Yeah, we've lived through the negative impact of the way it used to be.
Addressing that and if there are any issues with security, as far as the, the security of the development itself.
That is an issue, as you may know, it's, that's a hot issue in Amherst right now because there is a subdivision.
Correct.
That is incomplete. It hasn't been all built out. The roads have not been finished.
The town is not plowing it.
The town is not plowing it. And we've been fairly lucky in that regard when we do the covenant. But I was thinking also, the covenant, if the building lot under the covenant is worth, say, a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand, and the town has to take it over and pay prevailing wage to pave the road, that might not be enough versus what the developer can do it for.
Or it could be not worth enough, but it could be worth nothing if all of a sudden a spayed-toed frog or the spotted turtle was parked there.
That's true.
So, fortunately, we have not been under a lot, I thought, not, I don't think we need a wholesale review of it because we have not been under a lot of development pressure from subdivisions. We've had spurts, but right now we have a substantial. We've had spurts, but, uh, right now we have a substantial inventory of unbuilt lots, so.
So you're, but you don't have any active subdivision development at the moment?
Uh, nothing, nothing awaiting.
Nothing on the board. Everything, everything that we have has been approved and is either constructed or under construction. But where there's two in town, actually more than that, there's, there's one completely built and it houses on it, but there's some available lots. We have another one that's completely in, that's just not a finished coat and not a lot has been sold on it.
We have two of those.
Two of those?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think, what, the one.
By your house and.
That's one, but the one, is the one in, in Shadowport, is that built, is that built or is it?
Yes.
It's, it is built, okay.
Yep, he has the road, the road down.
But there's no houses, no, no lots sold.
Oh.
The one, the one behind my house, that lot, that street has been in for, gotta be ten years.
Nope.
Not a lot sold.
I don't know if he's anxious to sell them.
But that's, that's their decision.
Taxed on it, individual building lots there?
I have no idea. I don't think so. This one's a fourth zoning article.
Okay.
So definition.
Thank you for your help.
Affordable Housing Trust revised parking. Oh, I'm sorry, this is revised, there is a revised parking. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next meeting. Do you think it's worthwhile meeting the first Tuesday in March or you want to put it off for two months?
That's, uh, March third.
March third. Or we could do the seventeenth if you wanted, too, in March.
Oh, let's do that.
PVPC on the seventeenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pat's day?
You guys gonna be here?
You gonna bring the shamrocks in?
I think I'm the only Irishman inside.
I think not.
I think not.
Oh, yes. What am I thinking?
All right, you guys have good.
But we could, these guys are a quorum without us.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um.
I have that point to bring up, though, after you're finished, though, we'll get it.
Go ahead, go to your point first.
Okay, there was a farmer that called me and he's referring to a parcel on Moody Bay Road that is managed by the Fish and Wildlife Development People. It's where the old Zuckerman Farm, where the swallows were residing in that shed has been torn down. They evidently want to put an archery course in there. I'm not sure if it's a course, the way the farmer described it, or is it gonna be a, uh, just an individual practicing? But, uh, so I was just talking to Jim before the meeting and so how do I proceed in answering this gentleman's question? I mean, certainly we don't like to have a lone ranger go out there and make a decision. It's usually a board decision. So I would like to comfortably tell this person what to do and just.
So these are archery lessons?
They don't, that's the question, the question, what is it gonna be and, you know?
Is it even gonna be that?
Yeah.
Is it good, or maybe one person is just gonna be shooting a couple of arrows there, practicing.
You could shoot arrows in your backyard.
Well, that's exactly right.
If it's some, if it's some.
But what if it's gonna be an archery course or something like that?
If it's some kind of a range, they would need.
They'd need nothing because it's federal property.
But from a, no, from a, from that point, but from a safety point of view, depending how they're shooting the arrows, it could be a safety thing. Arrows can go, arrows can be deadly for a couple hundred yards. Okay, so that would be a building department, police chief, I would think.
So federal is exempt from zoning?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So from a zoning point of view, they could do this, but from a safety point of view, it's a different story.
The only reason we had site plan approval authority over the Fish and Wildlife headquarters is that it is privately owned, at least to the government. Same thing with the courthouse down here.
I'll tell you what Hally needs, they need a frisbee golf course. Somebody could make some money. They're big, they are big. Lot of fun, pretty good exercise.
Okay, next one is for, talk about a zoning article, the Affordable Housing Trust. Any comments on the values? That was what I really, I'm wondering, should we leave them, the values as in there? Or change them?
Section four, powers of trustees.
Which one?
Section four, powers of trustees, Affordable Housing Trust. Under, they have to purchase and retain real or personal property, including without restriction, investments that yield a high rate of income or no income. You don't really rate, generate, you don't really yield a rate of income, you yield a rate of return, so I would say without restriction, real estate investments that generate current income or no current income, or just strike it completely. Why do we care if they are generating income or not generating income?
Is that a qualification?
I don't think so. Because it's either or. So why even have that in there?
Well, that is, I think, sort of a, just a boilerplate, uh, authorities of the entity.
So if that's the case.
It doesn't make sense when you say yield a high rate of income.
How about, should, should be, you're talking, should be high rate of return or no return?
Yeah.
Including without restriction, investments.
They yield a high rate.
How about just taking out, including without restriction investments and then just take out high rate of return?
Or no return.
No return.
Take that section out, strike it, okay.
In fact, I think you could even say legal investments because there is a list of what, uh, municipalities and entities can invest in.
So including without restriction of legal investments?
Legal investments.
As opposed to real estate?
So, I want to make sure we get this right. To purchase and retain real or personal property, including without restriction, legal investments, provided that the purchase of real or personal property for consideration equal to or greater than five thousand shall require the approval of the Board of Selectment unless funded by an appropriation made by town meeting.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, actually, except to receive real property, there's a, there's a real property, uh, which is retained, real property. I think, including without restrictions, I think you want, might just want to say and to undertake legal investments. The, the, the two different concepts in there.
And to.
Enter into legal investments.
Enter into?
Yep.
Could legal investments include where the money's gonna be parked while you're waiting to buy real estate?
Probably. I mean, it's, the, the, the idea is that the municipality or its entities can't just invest wherever they want.
Correct, correct.
I can't take out of, town can't take out a private mortgage from Mike Sardzinski even though he wants to lend us money at a favorable rate.
Okay, so leave the values, everybody's good with the values of five thousand and ten thousand where they sit?
Yeah, it's, it's a practical matter, you're not gonna get much real estate for five thousand, but occasionally you can pick up little pieces.
I guess the question is, we've, excuse me, we've got the trust, which can make legal investments, but it's gonna be under the custodialship of the county, under the town treasurer, correct?
Yes.
Will the town treasurer be deciding where to park the money?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And it won't be the trustees, so, so we're not gonna worry about that five thousand dollar investment. The treasurer's not gonna have to go to the, uh,
No, that, well, that's for expenditures, not for, not for investments.
Okay. I had a small, just you can see, two notes, I had that, they were just very minor, more grammatical. There in that section two.
Oh, yeah.
The DHCD should go.
There.
And I thought maybe a semicolon would, in that other spot, down below that.
Okay. A bill for you on this one. Those are correct words to use for that one?
Yeah, well, actually, we don't have counties anymore, so Hampshire Registry of Ds, Hampshire Registry District of the Land.
Okay, so take that out. Very good. Okay. Then it's gonna get from Jessica, what chapter this, uh, the bylaws are going to be.
Oh, okay.
Okay, now I think we need to put these, the ability to utilize this fund back in the Affordable Housing Bylaw. Do we, do we take, do we take that out?
We took it out.
We took it out, so we need to go back, put the word, okay. Reinsert.
To include any zoning.
What is sinking?
The sinking fund is a fund that is self-admirating debt.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll allow the gifts to, or turn, uh, log, log direct payments. We have that language in the, um, I know it was in one of Larry's drafts.
Right.
So we just took it out, but we can add it back in easily enough. So that would probably be this, within the same article.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, actually, no, because that's a zoning article.
One is zone, one is general, so they'll be two different articles.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll email Davis next.
Question. I'll ask Bill on that, he's, he's a.
Okay, so we have the zone article, the general article, the definitions. So the definitions, we can have what's being added and what's being taken out as one article. So that's three.
Three zones and one general. This will be the.
For the parking, yeah.
Housing Trust Fund will be a general, so by law.
Okay. Definitions in this. Bill and, or anyone who can answer it, in section four.
Of.
Says, of the, it's, there's three of the, of the trust, powers of trustees.
Yes.
I go down to sec, to subpar FC.
Yep.
Toward the end of that first line, any personal mixed or real property? What is mixed property?
Mixed would be a combination of business and residential.
Well, mixed property, well, personal, mixed or real, uh, mixed would be something like fixtures. So you get the question of whether the walk-in refrigerator that's on the real estate is part of the building or is it personal property?
Okay.
So, the free, the freestanding refrigerator you have in your kitchen is personal property.
The built-in, and you have in your ultra-luxury kitchen, might be a fixture. And the refrigerator warehouse is real property.
Okay. Thank you.
Interesting to realize that one, okay. Okay. Everybody else good with those?
I think that was all mine.
Yep.
Oh, at the end of, uh, section six, we have the next page, just before section seven, is there something missing there? It says, subject to the requirements of the open meeting law, continue a meeting to a time, date and place certain. I'm just not sure that reads right.
Yep, so, well, I got the Whitley bylaw here, so I might have omitted something here.
Remember, this was not a complete final bylaw, this was, this was essentially it, but there was one other piece that they were gonna get me and they never got it to me.
Okay.
Call her up and ask if they're.
I think that's the.
That's, that's fine.
While the majority?
I just didn't know if that was legal ease or.
While the majority of the full Board of Trustees shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of any business.
Of the Board of Trustees.
Of the Board of Trustees, less than a quorum, subject to the requirements of the open meeting law, may be, oh, say.
Less than a quorum may, comma, subject to the requirements of the open meeting law, comma, continue a meeting to a time, date, place certain. That, that reads.
Okay.
Oh, that's, to, 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 so it's like a certain place or time.
Yes, yes.
Put certain at the end.
Right, so, uh.
It's like middle English or something.
Comma.
Yeah, put a, a date, a time, date and a place certain is, it's legalese.
There's something between lawyers and Shakespeare.
No, the comma is critical because somebody was, uh, referring to the Second Amendment for well-armed militia, comma, et cetera, blah, blah, comma. And it does make a difference in the, the way people interpret it.
So the idea of dating the time and place certain is that if you do have to adjourn the meeting, you have to give a, we are adjourn, we don't have a quorum, we're adjourning to next Tuesday night at six thirty, here.
Got it.
Uh, you can't just say, we don't have a quorum, we're adjourned.
Right, you have to give your next destination.
Yes. So anybody who came is on notice of where to come back to.
Any more of this, I'll be apparently.
Okay, that takes care of.
I think that's everything. Uh, I did say, I do have one more.
Budget. The budget is due for tomorrow, by tomorrow, the end of the day. My proposal is to level fund everything but the planning services, which is seventy-five hundred today, and go to fifteen thousand. Double it, from the conversation we had with Ken. Do we need the administrative assistant or should we strike that, Bill? Because we haven't used any money out of that.
Uh, that is in there. Yes, we need it.
Okay, leave it.
We are using, uh, Tim's assistant on a as-needed basis and it is part of a, it's part of a structured uh, compensation package with her services being spread across multiple departments.
Okay.
Do you think that just by saying double is kind of a, would make a significant impact if you made a little smaller number rather than just say double or I'm making a big deal out of it?
Well, or how many years has it been that it hasn't increased? That would be.
Probably since it began, but we can, we can check back.
We can check back. It's, it's at least at least ten years, probably closer to fifteen.
I think that alone might justify it.
Yeah, yeah, it might be too little.
Wow, I don't want to get.
Yeah, greedy.
Well, the other part of it is, we have to balance out, we're meeting with Ken, uh, roughly once a month. He's doing a certain amount of work in between. And, um, you know, in, in our current system, that's about what it needs. If we do have this enhanced service for, uh, through PVPC, whether Ken or someone else, that will come out of another pocket, I think. Uh, just going back to Affordable Housing Trust, um, I sent out an email late this afternoon to everyone with everything that I have been accumulating on Affordable Housing Trusts, including the various texts that we just have been looking at, some, um, estate pamphlet with guidelines, Affordable Housing Trusts from some other communities and the, um, the statute. So you've seen many of the pieces before, but at least now they'll all be in one email for your convenience.
Does the trust allow subject to acceptance of the trustees gifts of real estate?
Yes.
Yes.
I could find it anywhere, but I know, I, I remember seeing that. I could find it in here, but I know, I remember seeing that specific words.
That's important.
Purchase and retain, to accept and receive real property, personal, money, gift, et cetera, contribution. It is in, it's right in 4A.
As part of an estate plan, somebody might want to gift some real estate.
They, they might. There's, there may be, well, no, I'm just thinking, there may be some. It's not completely clear whether a gift is complete upon being made or whether even a gift has to be accepted by town meeting. I don't think there's a, there's a clear rule on that. But you would not necessarily want to be gifted a piece of swamp. The town might not want to be gifted a piece of swab, swab lander.
Subject to acceptance by the trustees, yeah.
Yep.
Do we need to do anything on the, what Janice said to us, not tonight?
The who?
The issue on Stockwell Road.
Stockwell Road?
No, that's going to be next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. That is going to be March 3rd, administrative review.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that, there may, they may have some issues there.
We wouldn't have known about the issues if we had not decided to send everything to the appropriate boards to meet.
Well, that is, that is part of the reason we send things out.
Exactly, because I just wanted to point that out, yeah.
Yeah. Because I send out the notices of the plans to various boards, and then in addition to that, I send out an email called "In Good Standing", meaning financially with the accountant, the, all the people in the first floor and second floor that have anything to do with money, and, and the police chief and the DPW. Is there anybody with outstanding issues? No, not a payday on their licenses, their fees, or taxes, whatever it might be. And it's amazing, you find some issues, and like this one with the, well, when he had.
The Spice Company.
The Spice Company. It was a small water bill, like, you know, a few hundred bucks. They were in town meeting, town hall, the next day at 9:00 in the morning with a check.
A cent.
Before Bill could even find out who was going to pay it or who's responsible, the bill had been paid. And it was nice to see the system work.
Anyway, I've got nothing else.
I have nothing else.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is history. Thank you, and thank you, John.